I'm going to call to order the Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for Tuesday, August 16, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Push down on the button.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
That went too far. Sorry. I can't turn it off.
While we have this moment, would you like to tell the public that we had an executive session?
Prior to tonight's executive session, or excuse me, prior to tonight's meeting, council met an executive session where matters involving contract labor, labor contract negotiations and personnel issues were discussed.
Mayor Brett Anderson.
Here.
Catherine Price Engelhardt.
Here.
Helen Hohol.
Here.
Andrew Lubin.
Here.
Carlitha Murray. Absent. Ed Parker.
Here.
Bob Paul.
Here.
Scott Robinson.
Here.
Nancy Sherlock.
Here.
Borough Solicitor.
Yes, Scott Holbert, on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
Roll call, Council President.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any announcements or presentations for this evening, so we're going to move on to public comment. State your name. I understand there may be some new case law. We have not been able to confirm that, so that's, but if you can give your street address or if you feel uncomfortable with that, just state that you are a resident of the borough.
I'm Don Rice. I'm a resident of the borough.
Thank you.
I do not understand why council will not rescind its November 30, 2021 resolution that declared Williamson Park lighted and expanded the RDA certified redevelopment area to include Williamson Park. Morrisville residents are told not to worry. The RDA is an asset to Williamson Park because they can get grants to improve the park. This is not true. It is unsubstantiated misinformation. SWP has asked for examples of park improvement grants the RDA could obtain that the borough cannot. No examples have been provided. SWP has asked for examples of the RDA improving an existing park. The RDA gave as an example Miller's Trailer Park, privately owned trailer park in Croydon that was demolished and made into a three acre park. This is not an example of improving an existing park. The Borough Solicitor cited an abandoned U.S. Navy owned housing development adjacent to a Warminster Township park. The site is contaminated with PFOS and asbestos. This site is not a park. It is Navy owned and the plan is to demolish it. It's not the same as improving an existing park. Stop the misinformation. The RDA and the park does not help improve the park. Jeff Darwak, the Executive Director of the RDA, in an email to the county commissioners, explained what expanding Morrisville's certified redevelopment area to include Williamson Park accomplishes. Quote, "It is simply a tool to assist the borough to realize this vision if they so choose," end quote. This vision is to help the borough develop the park. The RDA glided our park, not to make it a better park, but to develop it. Mr. Holbert stated in an email to Judge Gilman, "Morrisville Borough has withdrawn any interest in the development of Williamson Park." Council has not withdrawn any interest. It has only said it no longer supports the plan presented to council by Select Morrisville between August 2019 and December 2020. Any plan that comes before or after these dates may be acceptable. And with the RDA and the park, such a plan would be possible. Mr. Holbert is incorrect when he states council has withdrawn any interest. Council members, if you want to preserve our park, you need to remove the RDA from the park by rescinding your November 30, 2021 vote. Williamson Park does not belong in the certified redevelopment area. I would just add, as an afterthought, if any of you think that maybe we can just develop a bit of the park, maybe the park up, part up by Bridge Street.
Three minutes.
You can't do it. The Donated and Dedicated Property Act applies to all of the park. You can't subdivide it. You can't take a piece out of it. Thank you.
Next up is Mary Herenda.
Hello. I had, okay, two subjects.
State your name and.
Oh, yeah, Mary Herenda, and I am resident of the borough.
Thank you.
First, let me say that the American Rescue Plan money should be used to fund two full time police officers. Morrisville deserves a fully staffed police department and public safety. Second, some of my council members have not committed to preserving Williamson Park because they believe that they should leave open the possibility for a future development opportunity for someone someday. To that, I say, what about the community? In fact, Williamson Park was purchased with funds dedicated for the purchase of a park and under the Development, yes, Donated and Develop, Donated and Develop Property Act, it should be preserved. In fact, what about the opportunity for residents, especially those who live in apartments or homes with small plots, to walk by the river, under the trees, to see the birds and the beaver and the otters, and to have peace of mind and away, be away from other people if they so choose? What about the, you know, if you're bonding play, go sledding, lie in the grass, under the trees? What about the kids and adults that come to shoot hoops in a green park? What about having a playground for kids over five years old, for heaven's sake? What about the kids who come to play pickup or organize baseball and to play on teams with kids of other backgrounds, to get used to other types of people, to develop, learn teamwork and respect for others? What about opportunities for the health benefits of exercise and fresh air? For a mind at peace? For the trees that provide shade and help cool the planet and clean the air? What about the opportunity for community groups to do projects, to improve the park in their community, like tree planting? Making trails? Replacing benches and picnic tables? For flowers and maybe community gardens? The park should be here to benefit our residents and the broader community and not as an opportunity for wealthy developers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is Joan Schwartz. Name and however you feel comfortable with, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Joan Schwartz. I have 580 Rosemore Drive, a 58 year resident of our great Morrisville borough. I just love it here. And I'm here this evening to express my deep concern over the deplorable condition of the house at 573 Rosemore Drive. The property is grossly overgrown with weeds, debris, and infested with mice, rats, and various other critters, and we have even seen a stray deer or two in the front yard. Needless to say, this is an extreme health hazard to those of us living around the property. I even understand that mice carry more of the Lyme diseased ticks than deer do. I understand that we have been told by borough officials that nothing can be done because of not knowing the home's ownership. I also understand that the taxes have been paid on the property, so how can this be? Respectfully, I say that the bottom line is, the residents of Rosemore Drive need help, and we need it as soon as possible. This has been going on far too long. So I thank you, my neighbors thank you, for your anticipated and much appreciated consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Alexander.
Good evening. I'm here about.
You have to state your name.
I'm Diane Alexander. I live at 574 Rosemore Drive. I've been a resident of Morrisville for 50 years. I'm here to complain basically about the same thing she's complaining about, but I live a lot closer. I, I live 574, and the house is like one house away from mine on the other side of the street, and it's really deplorable condition. She moved out a year ago in Lake, she said, the taxes are being paid, so somebody has to know who owns that home. And I mean, I have a stray cat that I'm feeding, and she's fed good, she's three times a day, but she's bringing these mice across the street that's running around over there in that property. And before that, that property was overgrown like that, we never had a problem. So if you could please help us somehow, some way, get somebody out there to maybe look at it or do something about it, we certainly would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I ask, have you called the borough about, about this property? You have?
Yes.
Okay, so, so Judith or, or John, is there anything about this property?
Okay.
As we speak, I'm trying to look to see, I know recently, since we have hired Barry Isetten Associates, there's been several notice of violation notices that have been gone, going out, and I've been unable to locate some of the addresses as of now, but I have not been aware by any of the residents calling me personally, but that's, that's okay. I don't, I don't want you to think that you had to do that.
I was probably called, I called, and they said I had to do it online. I did it online, and they said I had to wait 30 days. I waited 30 days. And the neighborhood said it was going to be cut on this day.
Come on up to the podium. Yeah, it's, it's your turn. All right, I'm going to ask everybody to refrain from just asking questions out and please wait until we're finished with the individual's comment, and then if you wish to ask a question at that time. All right, name and address and three minutes.
Danielle Alexander, 574 Rosemore. Two problems, actually. The first is echoing my neighbor and my mom's concerns. So I called the borough on June 3, and I was told I had to submit the complaint online. I did that same day. I submitted the complaint. I sent pictures. And even at that time, we had a dead mouse at the bottom of their driveway. On June 10, I called the borough for an update. The inspector called me back, said that there was a process that the owner had to be given 30 days' notice to respond. Okay? On July 8, my neighbor at 568 called the borough looking for an update. He came down here himself. He was told that the grass would be cut on Monday, July 11, and that the owner would be assessed a $250 grass cutting fee, but the grass would be cut on the 11th. I called on the 12th because the grass was not cut. I left a message. No one called me back. On July 13, I called and left another message saying, I guess you guys are too busy. If you don't call me back today, I'll be back down to the borough. He called me back, the inspector. He was at my house, came out and talked to my dad and some other neighbors, said they didn't know who the property owner was. My dad said, you should have had the taxes paid. He said, yes. He said, well, then you know who owns it. We called our council person, Carlitha, she never called us back, and here are some pictures that I'm happy to share with all of you on what it looks like today. Big dead mice.
Oh, great. Let's see the mors.
The other issue I have is something I brought to the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's attention on March 14, that the light, traffic light at Pennsylvania Avenue and West Trenton Avenue, when you're coming from the Calhoun Street Bridge, when that light in front of you turns green, the light on the right hand side has a 10 second delay, it stays red for 10 more seconds. It is a hazard. I've seen people almost get hit because people will start to go when the light in front of them starts to turn green when it turns green, and then that light on the right side catches their eye, and they hit their brake, and the person behind them almost hits them.
Where is this? I'm sorry.
West Trenton Avenue and Pennsylvania, right by the sign, the Morrisville Shopping Center sign, here coming from the Trenton, the Calhoun Street Bridge. Reached out to the Pennsylvania DOT, they got back to me, said it's a municipality thing, and that they reached out to the municipality on March 14, and it's still like that today. And here is my correspondence, if you guys would like that, too.
I trust you, but you could pass it down. Seems like you have a meeting in order.
Let's, President, may I have John speak on this?
Sure.
If I could have, if I could please have John speak on this.
All right, ladies, ladies and gentlemen in council, please refrain from just speaking out and interrupting the members of public while they're doing their public comment. Wait for me to leave before you try to run the meeting. Go ahead, John.
So, the traffic light that you're talking about, that is actually an older traffic light. That's a crosswalk signal. It's an old fashioned crosswalk signal that's set up that way. We've dealt with Penn dot. It has, I'm sorry, that's how, I'm not going to, it's been that, that's what it's set up in, through Penn dot, through the permit, to be that way. So, we've had, we've had our traffic light people come out and take a look at it, and they told me that it's, it's operating correctly and within the right parameters. So, that, I'm just, that's what I was told by, by.
I have worked in Trenton since 1986. I've come over that bridge two times a day, every day since 1986. Friday, it's not been that way.
Okay, that's nice.
All right, maybe that's something we could ask, no, you guys could ask the engineer to possibly get a grant for, to update and put actual crosswalks lighting there. All right, next is Deborah Colgan.
Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. First, I'd like to say good luck to Ted. Thank you very much for your many, many years of working on council. I know it's a rough job, but it is appreciated, and best of luck to you and your family. I would like to speak in favor of the motion on the agenda tonight in favor of the tree planting in Williamson Park by the EAC. There's so many good reasons to plant trees, and I hope by now that you all know all of them, so I don't have to describe all of the many benefits or explain why trees are a vital piece of infrastructure. The land that the borough, the trees will be planted is held by the church trust. The borough is required by its lease to replace any trees that are removed. There's, there's a group who is willing and able to fulfill the borough's commitment. The only cost to the borough is about 15 minutes of John Leder's time. The EAC has developed a solid plan for the purchase, planting, and watering of the trees, and is partnering with groups and experts to accomplish the project. Every season that we miss for planting, we are allowing ourselves to fall further behind the ability to be a resilient community. Again, I urge council to clear that Williamson Park property is to be used solely for recreational purposes and is, as it has been for the borough's intention for almost 100 years. Don't throw away the resolve to ensure that the public will always have access to desirable parkland for health and welfare. I'm also hoping that we will be informed tonight as to what the borough plans to do to address the needs for police protection. Last month, the chief gave chilling comment as to, on what is at stake. The chief gave correct information about rescue plan money. Emergency services have always been an eligible use. Additionally, note that the rules did not change, the program was expanded. We've known, we've known what the rules work since January, and they took effect in April. Rescue plan money can be used as a bridge to hire police until we have a more stable revenue source. We need to address this now. I'm also hopeful that we will learn more about the missing rescue plan money that was discussed at the June Finance Committee meeting, and the plan for the use of this unprecedented opportunity for the borough. Don't blow it all on past financial mismanagement. Use ARPA money as intended, emergency services and community based needs. Use ARPA money strategically, parlay it against grants. I recognize you have past misdeeds or mismanagement to deal with, but that should not prevent us from moving forward. Council needs to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is Jonathan Kuntz. I'm sorry, Joshua, sorry. Sorry about that.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joshua Kuntz. I live at 40 Union Street, whereverver there. And I don't have really much to say today, or at least I don't think much, but to start, obviously terribly sorry to hear that you're going to be departing us from your position Ted, but I really appreciate all the work that you've done. You and I have been up to such a rough start. But I would like to also comment on 8H as well, in regards to the MEAC's efforts to try to have trees be replanted in the park. But as opposed to looking at some of the great practical information that Deb has already provided, I wanted to give a vision of the future. Because times are getting harder, we're all kind of aware of that, but times will then get better. And the future that I like to think about is not one where we have concrete everywhere. It's one where we have trees and we have nature, because honestly, as we probably all know, that is what humans are meant to be living in, is with nature, one with it to some degree, with harmony in some degree, and access to it as well. Everything we develop now puts effort on people in the future to right that error, that if we construct something there, that's only going to be something that we will later have to destroy so that we can make it right, so that we can have space that is treated well, so that we can interact with nature. And not only that, there's a historical aspect of this, that there's only so much of the world that hasn't been paved over and left how it was, that we lose every year with more development, what was our history, what was our world? And I started interacting with you guys with a story of having witnessed that up in my original hometown up in New Hope, with farms being demolished and turned into suburbs. And that has an impact, like a really big impact, not just on our current, but on our future. And it's energy that we're wasting, kind of in a way, you know, and it's only the people with power and control will be able to take action on that stuff. So I just want to say that I think it's really awesome that we have an opportunity here to do a very small amount of help for climate change by creating some carbon sinks in the form of beautiful trees that we can then also emotionally bond with and enjoy their presence. And I think that that should be kind of taken as a statement of the intention of that area as to not further develop it and basically cause more work for us in the future, as opposed to causing less work for us in the future by planting some trees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that'll close public comment. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. I'm going to combine 5A and 5B, if that's okay. You can make any request for changes for either one after we vote, so. Motion to approve the Borough Council regular meeting of minutes for the meeting of May 5th, May 9, 2022, and approval of the minutes for Borough Council regular meeting of June 21, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion on it?
I'd like to send you format, so I'd like to thank Bob Paul for creating it. It's much easier.
You're welcome, but don't get too used to it.
I intend to.
Judith, I had asked Judith, I just was looking for clarification. Bob did a great job. It's great. It was the synopsis of everyone's words. I just want to know if this is what we're doing going forward, that the person doing the minutes will just do a summary and cut it back that way. But we haven't, I don't think it's been determined yet, I guess, is what you had said, right?
When I had arrived at the borough, I know we had a discussion that that was one of the items that council was looking for, a condensed version of the meeting minutes. So we've been striving to do that ever since, but Bob has really put us in a much better place by doing so. So at this time, I think it's imperative for the entire council to have a discussion and to talk about what they would really like to see, because I have some council members stating that they would like a condensed version. I have others saying they'd like verbatim, word for word. So I think that we need guidance because it's council's decision ultimately, although in my prior positions, we have always tried to condense them because it's, it's really hard for council persons to read 24 pages of minutes prior to the meeting. So I think a condensed version is definitely necessary, and I believe it would be really council's discretion to say how condensed you would prefer it to be, and this should be a consensus among all of you. It would be very important for everybody to work together to gain that consensus, if we could, please.
President Parker? May I speak?
Yes.
I too appreciated the fact that they were condensed and easier on my printer, to not have to print out all those. One of the things I noticed, though, that some, oftentimes the second and firsts are not always correct, I would suggest just say, so moved and seconded, that we don't have to have the names necessary unless somebody really likes their name read, but oftentimes it's very hard for her downstairs to hear that, and so that would be a suggestion that I would add to it.
Great suggestion.
We have to have, we have to have, especially, so unfortunately, on some of the motions, we have to have that. So that's why we do have a formatted vote record sheet. So my suggestion for this this evening, because I did look at, at the prior record sheet, and it was, some of those motions were undetermined. So the person that was re-watching the meeting was going to have to determine that, which is more work. So what I'm asking of council this evening is, I'm actually keeping a record sheet, I know I asked the chief and John to help me, just because the, the regular person who's, who does this is not available this evening, but I think it would be advantageous for us to have a repeat. So when, when Ms. Hohol made the motion, I was hoping before this, the second was made, that I could say, motion by Ms. Hohol, and then second, when Mr. Parker made the second, second by Mr. Parker. "second by Mr. Parker", if that would be acceptable.
Even after both are done, we have a first "by" and a second "by".
Yes, a confirmation.
Just to confirm it, yes.
That way, we know what we're...
Thank you.
You know what's taking place. And I think that we have clarity at that point. So if it's not necessary to have the information, we still have it, and if it is necessary, we have it. So if council's amenable to this process, I would greatly appreciate being able to follow it.
If I could comment one more, Mr. Parker? Regarding... I'm not married to the idea of everything has to be verbatim, but there are some subject matter that I think should be addressed, just to make sure we address it. Because we meet once a month. The public likes to know what we're talking about. And, you know, this also will... If we can explain something better at a meeting in as few words as possible, I get that, then that informs the public without them having to, you know, come down and do right to nose and find out what's going on and have their questions answered.
Certainly, and I think what the answer was in regards to this was, we have our minutes on YouTube, so you can physically wa... I mean, I'm sorry, meeting. We have our meeting on YouTube. You can physically watch the meeting. You wouldn't really need to, and you can fast forward and so forth. And YouTube actually puts a word processor to it also. So we do have the word processor version. If someone wanted it verbatim, we have a copy of that. So that's why the thought process to condense the minutes themselves so council could read them more quickly, get through them, and vote on them, that's really why we wanted to get from point A to point B with the condensed version, because we already have a YouTube video that people can view. We already do have the, you know, the entire verbatim version from YouTube. So really, the minutes themselves are an action item that is needed for council. And that's what we really wanted to do because minutes are supposed to be action items, not a storybook, even though I understand, I, you know, I get that. Some people like more than less. So again, it's council's discretion as to some guidance.
Anyone else?
I think that's great. I just... So how will it be done, I guess, is what I'm still asking. So the person that's doing them will just kind of summarize? Have to listen first and then summarize it all? Is that... I'm just asking. I don't know.
I'm sure the Borough Association could give us some references. I mean, it is one of the things they teach at the boot camp, is that, you know, minutes are not an official... You know, they're the official record. They're not a verbatim of the meeting.
Correct, and that's what I'm really kind of quoting, that the minutes are supposed to be action items only. They're not supposed to have all the content that we do have. Again, though, it's council's discretion, if you're asking for that. So we're trying to do them to the best of our knowledge.
And I do remember the conversation that was had, that we wanted to condense them because they were verbatim. They were basically a novel of what happened at the meeting rather than just the action items, as you stated.
Correct, so our goal will be to condense them and maybe work towards making everyone happy on council.
It's a pretty ambitious goal. We're going to try.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stanchion, minutes pass. What? Scott Robinson. Got you there?
I'm sure.
What was your vote on the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to six, Finance. Six A, the treasurer's report to be provided at a later date. And six B is a call for a motion to approve the bill list. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. I second it.
A motion and a second made by Nancy, second by Catherine. Discussion? Hearing none. Well, let's do a roll call vote.
We'll call Council President, Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Engelhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Lubin.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. Mrs. Sherlock.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes. Motion passes, 7-0. Moving on to reports. Seven A, the mayor's report.
Thank you. All right, well, first of all, it was very exciting to see the return of the National Night Out. It turned out to be a great event. So I want to thank the same people that went into making sure this happened and making sure it happens. So amazing. We saw a lot of people back out. It's been a couple of years, so it was really nice. So I'd like to thank Chief George McClay, Chief Matt Widenheber, the guys over at Solid Rock, Adam and Zach, former mayor Tom Wasnowski, and Imagine Marsville, and there's just so many others. We had some great sponsors. We had Britton Industries, was a great sponsor that stepped up, and Parks Casino. So in the end, as we said before, this didn't cost a pearl a dime. It didn't cost anybody anything to attend. And at the end of the night, it seemed like everybody had a lot of fun. So I consider it very successful, and I want everyone to know that we're already working on next year. So we're looking forward to having it back already. So that's good. Coming up soon, we got the Labor Day picnic, so we'll be getting a lot more information now that that's getting closer. Just to give you a little preview, we're going to have a couple of long game-type tournaments, like bags, like the giant tic-tac-toes, the giant Jenga, maybe a couple eating competitions, and just your normal picnic-type stuff. Come hang out for today, you know, with your neighbors and community. And I think it'll be real nice, as it always is. And we're calling that the Marsville Labor Day Picnic, by the way, just to be clear. So real quick, three of the last four months, you've heard me up here advocating that I'm trying to work with council. Not trying to, I'm working very well with council, the manager, the chief of police, on both retaining and hiring police officers to strengthen our force for the future, to keep it strong now and to make sure it grows into a full-time police department someday. There's a lot of obstacles we have, thank you. There's a lot, and we heard someone speak about it tonight, and that was great. There's a lot of obstacles, so I don't want anyone to be misunderstood. Everybody up here is a resident, with the exception of our solicitor, sorry. But everyone up here is a resident, and public safety is important to them, and I know it is. They're doing their due diligence. You know, I'm here to represent the borough, and that goes on every side of the building, as well as these people here. I need to support them as well. So I want you to know that this has not been forgotten, and it is on everybody, at the front of everybody's list. Obviously, there's a lot more involved than any of us are going to sit here and say. But I'd like, I don't want, is I don't want three or four hours of people to come in, hear a public comment, and speak for three minutes and not get their question answered. If you really have a question about this, I would recommend and encourage you to email one of us. And I think that would be, you know, that way we get some two-way communication going. And I think it's a lot more productive than three hours of people saying something and not getting answered. So thank you. So I just wanted to give everybody an update that we're still moving forward on that and always will be. So next, and most important thing I want to say tonight. Thank you, Ted Parker. Wow, it's going to be... You're going to be missed. So I want to say something. Most people probably don't notice, a lot of people probably do. When I first met Ted, maybe six or seven years ago, we didn't like each other very much. But it was for the wrong reasons. We didn't get to know each other very well. And after I lost that election in '17, slowly got to know Ted a little better. And I also noticed something else about him. He had completely, not completely, but he had transformed the way he handles himself, whether it be up here or with the people he interacts with in public. He went to all the proper training courses and everything he needed to do to be good at what he does up here. And him and both Wanda back here have given many, many, many years in many different ways to this community. Between the two of them, decades. To different, the different, whether it be the school board, whether it be here, whether it be a different board. So I just want them to know, A, how much their time here has been appreciated, how much they will be remembered. And as president and your leadership, I'm sure we'll have a fine president. Business always goes on, but your leadership as president will most definitely be missed. You're somebody I've learned to be able to come to for advice, and that will be missed as well. So actually, I'm still going to call you. So best wishes, Ted and Wanda. We will miss you, but we wish you the best. It's time for the next part of your chapter, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Police Chief's report. Somehow I have a feeling this is going to be more serious.
The mayor took my one paragraph out about the National Night Out. It was a very nice night for all our citizens, and next year we'll be doing it bigger and better. It's nice to have a little financial backing from some of the companies. So a little bit about crime right now. The borough, we've had four burglaries at the Design for Vision up on Trenton Avenue. We have a arrest warrant for all of them. A gentleman by the name of Derek Coleman, who is head of Trenton, the Mercer County DA's office. Quarantined has been looking for him for weeks now, and they have not been able to come up with. But we do know who it is. We're hoping we get him apprehended shortly. We had an investigation about two weeks ago in one of the block of Harper, where in conjunction with the DA's Narcotics Task Force, we arrested a male with narcotics, as well as five handguns, with three of those ghost guns, which I hope everyone knows what they are. He was a felon that was not allowed to possess handguns. I just left out a little bit about, for new people, the DA's Narcotics Task Force was created five years ago. I petitioned the commissioners for a narcotics task force, which they never had until that point. So what's nice is when I call, I get very quick action from their task force. So that was a very good investigation, very quickly done. And we took five handguns, as well as a felon off the street. And lastly, I'll be coming to you next month in conjunction with the Solid Rock View Center. Again, we're going to be doing a trick-or-treat night in October. We're going to do a movie night that same night. Be sponsored by the police department with the help of people over at the Solid Rock View Center. That's all I have for you, Mike.
Thank you, Chief.
Manager's report.
Ms. Parker, could I ask you? Go ahead. I just wanted to... Will that be held in the park or down at Solid Rock?
The park.
In the park, thank you.
So the gentleman on Clymer, a couple of years ago, on 4th of July, on a Sunday, a lot of the residents complained about hearing gunshots. Is that related to the gentleman that was arrested?
Manager's report.
Council President, do you mind if I have a question for the chief?
Sure.
Chief, could you please speak briefly regarding the Bridge Street project and the roadway systems that are going to take place? I'm not sure if you would need the paperwork.
I have been in touch with the builder, the contractor, whatever you like to call them. They will be maintaining always two lanes. We're going to be shutting down one half of the highway, but maintaining two lanes on the other side. There's not going to be any parking from the 7-Eleven down to probably the deli. But they're always going to... Everybody's going to be able to get to where they need to get, whether it's the flag store, whether it's 7-Eleven. But there's not going to be... They're going to restrict parking, and they're going to restrict one side of the highway. But they have been... We're in touch with, I forget the name of the company. I can tell you her name, Sabrina, it's the best I got for you. But we're monitoring it. John and I are both talking to those people and we're going to make sure the highway stays open the whole time, just not the whole highway.
Loftus, Loftus Construction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
A little more about the Bridge Street project. I've been pointing to the renderings over on this side of the room for a couple of months now. We've been collaborating with PennDOT for some time. The borough is a go-through for this project. It's a grant. It's a wonderful grant. The bids came in under bid. We'll be able to have enough money to complete the project. What we're looking at right now is some tree work done in the area that they did not anticipate. So once that's taken care of, the construction is actually begun. So this is a very positive project. I know I was recently also contacted by Mr. Patrick Starr. I believe Ms. Nancy Sherlock and Ms. Cogan were involved with him from, I guess this project goes back from 2012.
Yeah, I was going to say at least eight years.
2012. So it's been an ongoing project for years. It was kind of dormant for a while, and now that I'm here, I've picked back up and we're working through it. I'm very excited for this project. I think it's a gateway for the community to connect with other communities. So I think it's a wonderful project. We do have a motion on the agenda this evening regarding it. So the thought process is to eventually possibly have either some type of a ribbon-cutting ceremony or even something prior to that. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do some sort of a kickoff or not. But I think that I'll be talking more with Mr. Starr and possibly coming to the Parks and Recreation Meeting, depending on what transpires. Because we're not sure if we're really able to go in the area where the work is to really have a shovel-in-the-ground-type, we're starting a project. So we may have to come up with something different. But I know Patrick's going to be in touch, and we had a wonderful conversation. And I'm happy to say that hopefully by December that this project will be finished, and it'll be a connector to the trails. So it's very interesting and very positive. The other item that we were working on for Capital Projects is we have continued collaboration for a possible donor with the engineering for the resurrection of the Manor Park grant. We should have some information with that shortly. Most of my report is really in-house items that we've been working on. So if there's any questions from council, I'm greatly able to answer them for you. Thank you very much. And I too would like to thank Council President Ted Parker. I've worked with him since I arrived at Morrisville, and it's been an honor to work with someone who has an understanding of municipal government. And I would just like to thank him. And also probably, I don't think I've ever met Wanda, but it was nice to meet you. I'm sure you probably have had to put up with many emails and phone calls and all of those wonderful things. So I think that the better half should always have a thank you from all of us because we're taking the time of the person who is close to them. So I always say that about my better half. But again, thank you very much, Ted and Wanda. It's been a nice year. I wish you both the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Committee reports.
Hi. I apologize that this wasn't in your packet. First, I'd labeled it with the wrong date, and then, so I apologize. We had a Parks and Recreation meeting in July at 7:00 PM here. Present was myself as the chairwoman, Andrew Lubin as a councilperson, a member of the Parks Committee, Nancy Sherlock, a councilperson, was unable to attend. We had, as a resident, Debbie Colgan, and Councilwoman Helen attended. The meeting was open at 7:00 PM. June minutes were approved, as changed Jane Berger's name was removed from attending from the last meeting. The upcoming event was August 5th, food truck event. And upcoming is the October 9th, Oktoberfest, another food truck event. As many of you know, it was canceled due to incoming storm that was supposed to be there at 4:00, then 5:00, and then showed up at 9:00. Very sad. But we had over 1,000 people who checked that they were interested. So obviously, it's something that the community wanted. I was very bummed. Councilwoman Helen, Helen asked why residents were allowed to participate in the committee meetings. She understood that those were not allowed. And explanation was that committees are set up with three members of council, and residents were allowed to attend and participate in those discussions. It was encouraged for Councilwoman to look up the code book, though it's very vague in the code book, I have to admit. But clarifications from our board president, who oversees and sets up the committees. Discussion on how different organizations are being encouraged to fundraise to purchase the replacement trees in Williamson Park. Discussion was done on how this might happen, since we know the Borough just can't afford that. SWAT analysis. I decided to do a SWAT analysis, and all the attendees participated in. We listed our strengths, our location, the variety of parks we have, our potential, community support and use, and the environmental impact. Weakness: baseball, too much, no comprehensive plan in place, safe playground equipment, and no funding. Opportunities was linkage and trails and future trails, partnerships with other groups. And threats was funding and safety. Councilman Lubin asked about a way to honor our vets. It was suggested that Patriots Park is a good place, that that might happen. A date was set for July 13th, what should be August 13th, was suggested for the next date to finish the painting project. That was canceled. Meeting was adjourned at 8:10 PM. Thank you.
Is there any other committee meetings?
Mr. Parker, we had the joint school board council meeting. It was canceled, though. Excuse me. The president was not able to make it. He was traveling for work. So we all agreed that it will be at a future date. Just don't know what that date is, although--
School board president.
Yes, I'm sorry, school board president. So, but one thing that was, I did inquire about, we've heard a lot on the news about shortage of teachers and so forth, and our school's not in jeopardy. So although, because we're already small, I think they're able to do consolidations. But we're not in jeopardy with regards to short-staffed. That's all I have.
Council President. I have some questions. We had in our delivery about the library board that had met, and some of the things I found a little disturbing. The library board is moving to make the library building a National Register of Historic Buildings, and they're spending money to do that. Was that ever told to council? It is a government building, and I don't know that the library can make these decisions without council's approval.
It was discussed with council. We've not spent any money yet. We raised money to do this.
When was it discussed with council? Was it put as a vote?
Honestly, I have to go back. Those minutes that were, I was surprised to see the minutes in the packet. They were dropped off to be able to put in the library folder down, because the minutes are kept at the Borough. After the library meets, the minutes are kept at the Borough. So I'd have to go back and see exactly. I guess it was just a discussion.
It says that Connie moved to hire Jeffrey Marshall to prepare the paperwork needed to get the library approval for the National Register. Nina seconded, Deena seconded, and the motion passed unanimously. And he was hired in December, it says?
Yes, but we didn't really hire him. We hired, we had a motion to hire him, but there was no money, and he hasn't done anything yet. I don't know if you're familiar with who Jeffrey Marshall is, but he's a Bucks County historian. And so we haven't gotten to the point where we can actually, there's just not enough money to be able to start the process. So it's really, at this point, it's a concept. So--
Are you guys talking to the Borough manager? Because if you're hiring him, that goes against expenses, and I don't believe that this was in the budget at all.
Well, two things. One, we didn't, we have not spent a dime, so there's been no money spent. The money is actually a separate line item, Friends of the Library. It's not, and that was one of the reasons I wanted a separate line item for Friends of the Library's funds versus the library budget. But it was told to me that the preference was to keep it all one line and keep your own track.
I still, I don't, I don't know, I leave it to Judith to decide, but I would think that a government building needs a vote and not just the library board to decide.
I don't have any problems or issues with that when we get to that point, I suppose. I'm not saying it's a dead issue. I am saying that it's a struggle. I mean, you need, there's about $5,000 that's needed to do this, and we don't have $5,000. The Borough doesn't have $5,000, and neither does Friends of the Library.
So also, I was reading in the minutes about grants, and I was under the impression, just like with every other department, that grants needed approval from the Borough. But yet, I see that you guys are going for grants, and I've never seen a request for a grant for the library. Not that I'm against it. I'm just wondering why the council hasn't--
Because--
I haven't seen a grant either.
And even if they were, as a board for the library, they can work towards getting grants, and they would be presented to the Borough manager, and then it would be presented to council for vote if that was necessary.
Correct.
So they are able to, just like the general, people from the general public, just like the MEAC is allowed to do that.
Yes, but Ted, they said they're going for grants, and I don't--
Well, you're reading minutes, and that's not necessarily, again, accurate as to what was discussed there. This is not, this is not question-and-answer part. Is there any other reports? Do you have anything else from the library that you'd like--
I would just say that Judith and Diane could have a conversation about this, because the grants are really being researched from the library itself, not the, not the board.
Even if the board was researching and looking for grants, there's nothing wrong with that. It's done every day by individuals, by individual council members, by groups, both, you know, subcommittee groups, both boards, both general public. I mean--
It's not the researching I'm questioning. It's the actual--
They didn't go for a grant. If they went for a grant, then there would be an application. So there's not an application. And if there was an application, they would need the Borough manager's signature--
Absolutely. That's what I'm asking about, Ted.
It doesn't exist because it hasn't been presented to you. Let's move on. This is not relevant to the reports. 8A, please. This is not, this is not sit here and picket people--
This is relevant in terms of the process and procedures for the council.
The process and procedures being followed. They haven't done anything.
I'm asking about that, Ted.
The librarian is allowed to look for grants for the library.
They said that they wrote a grant in the meeting minutes, and that's what I'm questioning.
Is that what says, I have to look at them again. I'm sorry. You're talking about December of last year. If there was a grant written, it might have been written by Diane and her staff. There's no, the advisory board did not write any grants. So--
I mean, we want to start picking. People go to private businesses to solicit donations.
We yelled at the chief of police last year for going for a grant without council knowing. So that's all I'm trying to--
That was a little different. That grant was written, and it was already in the process, okay?
I'm trying to alleviate the same scenario.
No, you're not.
I am.
No, you're not.
I don't see the difference between the chief and the library.
I don't see the difference between a council member going behind the rest of council for grants.
No councilwoman went for a grant behind anyone's back.
Went for donations. My apologies for misstating. They went for donations on behalf of council. It was on behalf of council. Moving on to 8A, call for a motion to award the contract for the 2022 CDBG Design/Build curb ramp project to T. Schiffer Contractors, Inc., for the base bid plus alternative bid number one for a total contract amount of $202,400 to be paid from CDBG funds. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Scott?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Motion passes 7-0. 8B, a call for a motion to approve payment number two to GNB Construction Group, Inc., in the amount of $59,166.88 for the Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit project to be paid from grant funds. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Parker. Is this the, is this the final piece of this project? Do you know, or is there another phase?
It's the final piece of the project, although we are, after review, we're looking at some extra funds that we have to improve the project itself. So you will see a little bit more coming in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion passes 7-0. Call for a motion to advertise the PA DEP amendments to the Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance for adoption of ordinance at the September 20th, 2022 council meeting. Can I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Whoever.
Discussion.
I think Bob, Bob got it.
Yeah, Bob moved, and-- All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Scott? Abstentions. Motion passes 7-0. Call for a motion to ratify the Borough manager's execution of the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resource letter of authorization dated July 25th, 2022 regarding the Bridge Street crossing project. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention. Motion passes 7-0. Call for a motion to approve and accept the Civil Service Commission eligibility, oh God, eligibility, I can't even say it, forgot it. List approved, approved date of March 28th, 2022, expiring March 28th, 2023, for entry-level full-time police officers. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Andrew.
So approval of this list, what does that mean?
Exactly what he said, yes. He can be in the process to look at hiring officers from that list.
Who decides on the officers? Does the chief or does council?
Final approval of the hiring is done by council.
Okay. So we had a list that had, I don't really know how many people were on it, but 50, and now we're down to three. Like, I, I'm not opposed to approving this list. However, I do think that council needs to, to tell the Civil Service Commission to start the process again and create a more robust list. This isn't much of a choice.
How is that done? Maybe that's just the amount of people who are available. How do they come up with the people? Are those people that, are those standards that we passed them, and then they come up with people who match those standards?
They take the consortium test, and we advertise them across.
Correct.
And whoever's eligible for that consortium test, we put it in the allocation. And I, we have at that point, we get 12. 12 people apply. And then from there, either number one, I knock them off the list for a background investigation. Two, they went to other places. Either just recruit.
How often are the consortium tests given?
Every six months. Every six months, it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And what you end up having is the same guys, women, going back and taking the test over and over again. So that true list isn't really a true list. We've been, the Chiefs of Police Association has been who sponsors the test. Trying to come up with a better idea to make that list a little bit bigger for candidates.
How many people were on the last consortium?
It wasn't good. I can't tell you exactly. I don't have those figures.
For those who don't know, that's Barbara Bauer. She is the chairman of the civil service.
She runs the meeting, and we have this on the other end.
It was done in May. So 112 people signed up, 81 people finished showing up, 131 through the physical, 27 failed the physical, 21 failed the written, giving us a possibility of 83 people. We're, and we talked about this, and just bringing my education back in from 30 years ago, 83 people out of 212. We've been telling Rick Duda, the gentleman who run their trade facility, he's got to figure out a better way to get that 83 up. Because if we can't, if we can't interview these people, because they failed the physical, or that could be somebody who, they had to do 25 sit-ups or 30 sit-ups, they only did 29, and out of that. I just find that horrendous, that we're not going to have an opportunity to talk to that person. As to failing the written test, I don't know. But 83 passing is not, is not good.
Well, that's still 83. How many of those are still available, which is a better list than three?
Three, 50 of those had to rack them up. So now you're down 50 candidates, because I'm not taking on somebody who's not ready to help.
Right.
So now you're down 50. I can tell you, this was given in May, this list is dead. I have to wait for the next list to come out, which I believe is going to be in November.
Right, but if this was in May, if I'm not right, wrong, this civil service test was from November of '21, correct? So if the May of '22 list is dead, then I don't understand why the November of '21 list is still viable.
We still have, and if you go on there, that are working part-time in other places. Or anybody else. Well, two people on our list, he wants a part-time guy for us now, who's sitting number one on another list, but he's just waiting to go. Two is a gentleman who does not have any police experience, so he hasn't been hired by anybody. Three is an officer who works part-time for us and works full-time at Temple. But he's still available to come here. He would rather come here than work at Temple. So there are three people that are left on that list.
I understand, but nothing. I'm just talking to council that I think that we need to look at the other lists. I don't have a problem approving this list, but for future hires, if we're going to do that, we're going to need a more robust list. That's just my opinion.
Remember, again, there'll be another test given, and we'll get that list going again. And remember, during this whole time, that list got put together, we were running into the BS with COVID, and it grew together, and then signing needed to be, that was a background investigation, so it takes time.
I understand. That's why I think we need to discuss that as a council.
Chief, if, when they give the test in November, then when do they actually do the physical and the rest of it? So when it starts in November, when will you see final results?
We'll get that, they give the physical along right there.
Oh, okay.
Do the fitness test.
Right.
That'll all be done in one day, and we'll get that list. We'll get that list in a week.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
And you have to advertise that you're looking for officers.
Okay.
You gotta be ready. By the time that list gets ready, you gotta be ready to hire. And sit there, and sit there, and sit there.
That's what I'm getting at. I was trying to figure out the timing. Okay, thank you. Good. Good.
So just to be clear, the individuals on this list are people who have applied here?
Yes.
Right, and that's one of the criteria that you, you have to actually physically apply here. It's not like we can go pluck people from the consortium list who don't want to come here and.
Well, they actually did. The Civil Service Commission.
Reached out, yes, but they still had to, right, they still had to apply. They still had to put in an application. Yeah, okay.
There's other ways to look at this, too. You do your own test. Molly just did her own test last week. I, you know, they had certain parameters that it really made the candidate be a active officer already and have worked in a borough. They had not, and they weren't. They only had, I think they had eight people, Molly. And they, they got through pretty quickly. So it, it gives you the idea that you're getting somebody who's a little more homegrown and has used with the municipality that's smaller than a bigger township. Or it also cuts out your guys coming out of the city, too. They're, they're just, they're trying to cherry pick every job that's out there right now. They're trying to escape the city. So something that, I talk to civil service about pretty often. Something that's a little more difficult, but it can be done. And it's not, it's not very possible either.
Barb, our civil service rules allow us to have our own test?
Yes.
I have, I have a question.
One second, Scott.
Okay.
Yeah, we can change that and be off of that and.
So you guys would recommend to us?
Okay.
All right, Scott, go ahead.
My, my question is, Chief, how long from after the consortium's over and when people apply to get, to get people, say, ready to hire? Because like consortium today in 2021, that list came out. There was 30 some people on it. Well, township hired two people off that list before we even had the parole interview. So is there a way to speed the process up?
Yeah, we have to get people to the table. They have different, they have different standards of hiring than we do. So I don't know how the process went. But when this comes, when that next list comes out, you gotta be on it the first day. And civil service has to be on it the first day. Problem is that everybody from civil service are volunteers. So to get everybody together is a problem during COVID.
And it's the next consortium?
November?
What day is November?
I don't know.
Well, you said get right on it. And the consortium's November 1st. And we don't get on it until November 30th. And we missed a month. We missed 30 days.
I want you to state that.
We have to get right on it. 30 days is not getting right on it. So if.
Scott, Scott, you're a part of that committee, Scott.
We can get right on it.
You're a part of that committee. You, you've been around this for the last couple of years. So you know what the process was.
I know the process. I, I asked you when the consortium is. You're involved with the consortium. You're a chief. So I just asked you what, what made it?
I'm not, I'm not involved in consortium tests.
Well, Barb has a contact. No, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
All right.
We'll get on that.
I have a question for the solicitor. If we don't accept this list, can we make any hires this year?
Not until a new list comes out. You have to hire off the eligibility list provided by the civil, your civil service commission. So if you don't accept this list, you're waiting months.
Okay.
So yes, you need to accept this from the hiring standpoint.
So, but if we hire, but if we approve this list, but we don't hire an officer, and then we approve a second list, we would hire off of the second list?
If civil service publishes and approves a new list, yes. But, but this list would remain active as well.
Right.
But they could publish a new list in that time, but yes.
And then also, first list, and that would, this would be done. They'd make the vote on that. So if you have a current list and you work on the next one, you get it ready to go. They have to say the first one's down that.
Right. You, there's only one, there's only one civil service list. So this one's good until they were to vote on the next one.
But if we direct them to do another search, then they would do that?
I, I'm not civil service.
Would there be, now these positions are, I mean, these are actually civil service positions that are open. We, if we hire, say we hire tomorrow, we have to advertise it for hiring. Would someone that just took the consortium in May, would they be closed out from our hiring process? They're not eligible because they're not on our list? And would there be any potential type of, you know, a lawsuit ran and say, hey, I'm a, I'm ineligible, you know, eligible for the civil service process in the county? And I was.
Doesn't it go back to actually applying?
Yes, yeah, we, there would be no, the borough wouldn't be in any legal jeopardy. They, they have to go through the civil service process. And that is getting, going through the process, going through the civil service, service commission, getting on the list. Just because you want to come here, doesn't mean you're eligible to come here. You need to go through the process.
I mean, if you apply here, say someone's at the consortium today, and they see that, oh, Mars was hiring, they put an application in.
Again, you still, you, we are required by, it doesn't matter. We are required by the state law to hire off of that list. They have to go through the civil service process with the borough. The consortium puts on the test. They are not the civil service commission. Civil Service Commission of Morrisville Borough determines the list that Borough Council is able to hire from.
All right, I believe we've had adequate discussion on the topic. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 8F, a call for a motion to approve Chief McClay to investigate a police vehicle accident according to the Police Directive 113 Internal Affairs.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion.
So this is the second one in two months? Do we have a report coming to us about the first one? I understand.
We bring it up as new business then. I mean, does council eventually get to copy the report? Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 8G, a call for a motion to approve special event road closure for a portion of the 200 block of Stockham Avenue, 205 through 227 for Holy Trinity School's sixth annual food truck frenzy to be held from 4:30 PM to 9:30 PM on Friday, September 9th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 8H, 8H, discuss, approve or deny the MEAC's request for support to move forward with the Williamson Park tree proposal.
I still move.
Second.
You, you'll need to state the full motion.
Are you motioning to approve or deny?
Yeah, approve or deny.
I motion that we approve.
I'll second it to move it forward. Discussion.
Is there a cost to the borough?
There is no cost to the borough. Can we add that in? I don't care.
Can we add it in?
Yes, you can add that in.
All right, it's added in.
Mr. President, I have a motion from Ms. Engelhardt. I'm sorry for Mr. Lubin.
Yeah. It was changed to.
Yes, Andrew did say.
Because he asked another question and they. I think for this one.
All right, you can give it to Andrew. I don't care. All right, so we have a, we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second to approve. It will be of no cost to the borough. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Call for, call for a motion to, I don't know about that part, to regretfully accept Ted Parker's resignation from the Morrisville Municipal Authority effective August 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? John left. Anyway, it's been an honor working with the individuals on the municipal authority, both the board members and the employees and administration. A lot goes on behind the scenes that a lot of people don't know. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Goes into effect anyway.
Yeah. 8J, a call for a motion to regretfully accept Councilman Ted Parker's resignation from the Morrisville Borough Council effective August 22nd, 2022. I will move that one.
Okay, Ted.
I have a second?
Second.
It's been an honor to serve with all of the members of council through my years up here. It's going on almost 10 years. Didn't always agree with everybody, but I think throughout the years, we did some, we did some positive things. Did the best we could. This current council, I think we don't always all agree, but we all have the best interest of the borough at heart. And we, something I've always, I've said to many people that I've worked with in the past, I didn't necessarily agree with on everything. We pass a lot more things unanimously than we, you know, pass or don't have, or something we support pass. We work together more than we realize. And I think you need to think about that moving forward, that that there are positive things that you can do by working harder together instead of, I won't, I won't get too much into it, but a lot more can be done if you, you try to work together as opposed to always trying to, to outdo someone. All in favor?
Wait, Mr. President, before we vote, I just wanted to add my name to the long list of people who are thanking you for your many years of service to this borough. Your contributions to this council go way beyond what you do up here on the dais. I don't think a lot of the citizens understand that. You bring a wealth of experience and knowledge of the people involved, the issues. Also, your, your, your life as a union member is also very helpful in dealing with a lot of the issues that, that we confront. You're leaving very big shoes to fill. No, no one here, I think, can do that right off the bat. But we all appreciate how much of yourself you've given to this community, both in the school board, council, MMA, and, and, you know, everything else that you've done for all of us. So I just want to thank you for, for leading us and keeping us on the straight and narrow. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Just on behalf of myself, Randy, Adam, Mike, the rest of our team at Flagger Associates, we understand, I mean, we represent multiple municipalities. Randy himself has been a borough council member. We understand how difficult this job is, can be, has been. To do it for 10 years means you really care. I mean, you guys all know, you're, you're not really compensated for being up here. You're doing this because you care about the town. And, you know, as you said, you know, you guys agree on a lot more than you realize, but there is tumultuous times to sit through that and be the leader. I mean, you've been a benefit to Morrisville, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Don't cry, Ted.
I'm trying not to. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Real quick, before we vote, I just want to say that Ted, I thought you had the easiest job in the world up until January of 2020. And then, then I figured out that it wasn't quite so easy. Thank you for coming into town. I guess I'm the running now. And even based it, like, you're like one of us from way back in the day. I, I respect you. I learned a lot from you. And I, I have to say, you're fair, you're honest. And just, I, it was a pleasure, it was a pleasure serving for you. I guess we have to owe guests this, I don't know. I still give the due thanks on stage. Good luck, good luck, you know, where you're going. And best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Now that, Scott and I are absolutely a perfect example of polar opposites politically and sometimes philosophically. But we started working together and we respect each other now and we understand each other and where we come from with our views better. And so that, that's some, that's a relationship that everybody should work at. I mean, you have a lot more.
The, the people of our are more, are more important than the.
No, but I mean, I mean, what I'm saying is I'm trying to, to, to state that, you know, I mean, we were complete opposites, you know, on a lot of things. And we've, we've worked together.
I don't think we were that much opposite, Ted.
I don't know. I don't know. Maybe, maybe not.
Though I think this conversation proves Ted's right.
Yeah, I kind of. All right, Scott, let's, let's move on. All right, all in favor?
Shorten them.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All right, 8K, a call for a motion to advertise a vacant council position in the Fourth Ward to complete a term expiring on January 2nd, 2024.
I still move that we advertise for a vacant council position in Fourth Ward.
I have a second? Motion and a second. I'm not quite sure what we need to discuss about this. It's a vacant position. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We have an appointment for the Morrisville Municipal Authority for a one, five-year term to, to.
I don't know.
One, wait, one five-year appointment to complete an unexpired term, which is not five years. Yeah. Yes, yeah. All right.
I was gonna say.
Unexpired term through January 6th, 2025. We have a letter of interest from Andrew Lubin. I almost said that wrong, sorry. So I guess we're going to open it up for nominations. So I'm going to open it up for nominations and I'm going to nominate Andrew Lubin. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? One more time, any other nominations? Hearing none, I'm going to close nominations and ask for a vote, yea or nay, for Mr. Lubin for Morrisville Municipal Authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, sir.
This, this is for Vic's position, not for yours, correct?
Yes, it's for Vic's, yes. Yeah, I was just reappointed, so it'll be longer. All right, there is no other business listed unless anyone has any. We're going to move on to borough officials. And I'm going to address 10A. It says, Council President Ted Parker is recreating a Business Outreach Subcommittee. Subcommittee and committees from council are the same thing. Appointing Councilwoman Halaho as the chair of the committee. It's open to two other, officially two other members of council. When Councilwoman now the Honorable Judge. Corinne Chronicle was the chair of that. She had. was the chair of that, she had a lot of the local businesses involved. It was an open forum. They also participated in it, and so hopefully Ms. Halaho will continue that process because it was beneficial, and it was, you know, really sad to see it die for as long as it did. But as president, the position of president is allowed to create subcommittees of council and actually fully staff them if need be. I prefer to have people volunteer, so... Anyone else who wishes to be a member of the committee? Reach out to who will now be the acting president of council until your reorganization meeting in September, Mr. Bob Paul. So does anybody else have anything? Nancy, would you like to address the dates for Jazz Fest?
Yes, it's September 10. From 12 to about 7:00 PM, we have a very competent lineup of entertainment, and I'm hoping we have a couple of food trucks, and we have some vendors. But we also encourage people to come, stay a while, bring your tents, your chairs, your picnics. We even have people to bring their dominoes and chess sets. So just putting it out there. I have not, I actually, the borough manager may be able to tell me. I had submitted a flyer to hang in the library, but before flyers are hung in the library, they have to get a number. I dropped it off last week. I don't know if they've submitted that to you. So I guess, have you seen that yet?
I have actually seen several flyers, so that's why I'm not sure.
Okay, that's fine. I haven't gotten back to the, I haven't gotten back. I was there Friday about it, and you have, it has to get a number. I get that.
This week was an inundation of flyers, so we will definitely get it done, though.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to let everyone know that the Jazz Fest started as a borough event back in the day, and it's one of the longest continuously running events that has been put on in the borough. And the motion last time was put on the agenda by myself, and I was supporting it. The council voted as it saw fit, but maybe the Parks and Recreation Committee might look at this as bringing this back in-house as a internal event. It's what year now, Nancy? We are 18?
19th year.
19th year. So almost 20 years continuously happening. None of the other events, the picnic, has had breaks in it. So think about that next year. All right. I have a couple of things before the adjournment, which is there are open council committees/board and commission appointments. The Civil Service Commission has a one-six-year alternate appointment, the remainder of an, who wrote this? Remainder of an unexpired term, which expires on 12/16 of 2025.
Did anyone reach out to Matt to see if he wanted that?
Yes, I emailed Matt, and I still have not received an answer as of yet.
Okay.
There's a, on the library board, there are two, three-year appointments. The remainder of their terms expire in March 1, 2024. The Municipal Authority has a one-five-year appointment to complete an unexpired term through...
Ted, I don't know, just the library board. Is it two unexpired terms that expire on the same day? Is that it? Okay.
Yeah. Yes. Did I even get through the Municipal Authority? Yeah, it expires on, okay. And then the Planning Commission has the remainder of a one-four year term, which expires on December 31, 2025. All right. For the last time, call for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, just one second. I'm sorry. Just give me a minute. I have a question about, has there been any movement on the roof update? About, and was thought about possibly putting some solar panels up there? I guess that's enough.
John, have you heard back from the roof, or we were getting estimates?
Okay.
On the actual replacement?
That's going to have to go in here. That's going to have to go right here.
Okay.
That's going to be engineered that way.
Yeah.
It's going to be a lot of money, so it's not going to be, it's not like a simple repair.
All right. Thank you. And we can just say thank you to the rain gods that we haven't had a lot of rain this summer. And then one last thing. In our report from the zoning officer, he had said that there's a vacant property list. He didn't list them this time, and I'm just wondering, I'm guessing maybe that one that we heard about tonight is on there. And of course, the house on Prospect, which has been over two, two years, two and a half years, is still sitting there. And I know that they've been trying to get a hold of the owner. Last I understand is they lived in Philadelphia or something, but nothing yet.
I've seen at least four NOV letters in the past week. I know that they're actively working on these items. And I know I hadn't heard from the residents regarding the issue this evening, but I do recall there was some conversation as to how can we find the owners? And I had to some of these buildings, and I had suggested to go to the bank, to go to the courthouse, and do some research. So it's not, nothing is being ignored. It is taking some time, and as you can see, they have been returning calls. It's just going to take some time until we get to the bottom of some of these things. And that has prompted us to speak with Bob Paul, who's the Chair of the Vacant Property Committee. We should be having, if all goes well and we have everything in order, we should be having a meeting in September. So you will eventually be getting lists, but all of that should go to the Chair first and to the meeting, and then that will come to council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?